Welcome everybody to the City of Marion City Council Meeting for November the 13th. You please stand for prayer and the blessed leader. Before I prepare, let's have a moment of silence for Judge Pat Smith that was laid to rest today. Lord, thank you for allowing us to come together to do the good work of the City of Marion and for allowing us to work together in a continuing way. Lord, thank you for blessing our country and our veterans this week, it's Veterans Week. We had a great celebration with our veterans that put their life on the line and protect the freedoms that we have so we can convene in places like this and conduct business for our families. And Lord, please remember this is Judge Pat Smith who was laid to rest today, who served the City of Marion faithfully as a municipal court judge. Amen.
Amen. I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand will one nation under God, indivisible and liberating, just as it is from our own.
As always, I'd like to welcome all our guests to the City of Marion's Council Meetings and I encourage you to come, come often, and invite other individuals to come so they can know what's happening in the City of Marion. We have a guest with us, two guests with us tonight, Stephanie Indergaard with HMRA and Ms. Marilyn Woodbury as well is here tonight, so welcome and thank you for coming. Moving along on our agenda, I have a minute, motion to approve the minutes for my regular meeting on October the 9th.
So, ma'am.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, I'm ready. I reported last meeting about the county not said they were going to spray the City of Marion, I don't see it sending the minutes nowhere and that's a matter of public record, you know.
I thought I saw it in there, Mr. Brady.
It just got in there. I wanted to be recorded that. I made that, I don't know why it's opened up.
Councilman Fraser stated that the county would be spraying however they will not be spraying the City of Marion. He expressed his concern that the citizens pay their taxes like everyone else and the county should spray the City of Marion as well.
It's on page four.
Page four.
Page four. Do you have a page? I'm doing my comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
It's in the minutes.
If I could, I inquired about that after Mr. Fraser brought it up. At the meeting, I inquired, called a couple of folks named today, and supposedly that funding came from the, wasn't taxpayer money, that's what I thought it was, but that funding to spray for mosquitoes came from a grant from, or a gift, a grant, whatever, the Marion County Healthcare Foundation.
Yeah, but it said it was for the whole county of Marion.
I wasn't at the meeting, no. I was thinking it was my tax dollars.
No, no, no.
And it was from the Healthcare Foundation.
Right, right.
And I was told that that's the way it was given, I don't know. But I did inquire after you met, you know, I appreciate that.
Are you fine? Yes, thank you. I read Chris, my own readiness. All in favor? Any discussion? opposed? Motion carries. Also attached is approval for the minutes for the special meeting on October 31st. I have a motion.
So, ma'am.
Second. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our employee of the month, employee of the month is Mr. Ellis Green. Ellis Green works for the City of Marion in the Public Works Department. You see Ellis, he mainly on the bushhogs, running around town cutting the bushhogs. Mr. Green had some medical issues taken care of yesterday on our day off of Veterans Day, so he was not able to do this tonight. Ellis has been working for us for a number of years and he does a great job running that back of bush hog and cutting the grass, that's mainly where you see Ellis. Good guy, appreciate everything he does for the City of Marion. So if you see him, tell him congratulations. Next on our agenda is the reappointment of Vivian Rogers to the PTR TA Board of Directors. Do we have a motion?
Someone to report, reappoint her.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is an update to HMRA, Ms. Stephanie Indergaard, a few steps opposed. You want to make that be correct?
I really don't like to stand at a podium so much. I'm Stephanie Indergaard, if you've not met me yet, I'm the Executive Director of HMRA and I've been in this position for just over a year now. And in talking with our board and our Chair Jamie Craig, she said, "Go to City Council, give them an update on what we're doing." So that's what I'm here for today. And you know, HMRA works in conjunction with the city on the facade grants that we have. And last year we did two $5,000 grants that went to JP Williams and Rem Care and that we saw huge successes with those through the spraying and they're finished up now. Although JP Williams on his own account has decided to continue work on his building, which is what we hope happens all the time with everybody. So he's replaced some of his downstairs windows, he's gotten the signage and has done more paint to the front of his building, so there's a lot of improvements going on in his building right now. And then last week with Alan, who serves on the facade grant committee, we met and determined the recipients of this next round of the facade grants, which includes two $7,500 grants. And one of them is going to Fastly Hardware and they're going to re-stuff those parts of their building because at the top it started to crumble and that's a safety hazard, so they're going to fix that and then repaint their building. And then the other $7,500 grant is going to Dolgan Dervish that has Magnolia's building and he's going to work on replacing sagging woodwork at the top of the building, which is a safety concern, replacing some of the windows that need some work done, and then also painting the trim and woodwork on his building. And then HMRA contributed $2,000 for a third recipient, which is going to Richard Godboll and he's going to do some work to the outside of, not Richard's restaurant, but he owns across the street George's Electronics. And so he's going to do some updates to the outside of his building. And I went and talked to all three of those business owners today and Alan caught some of them today as well, and they were all very excited about the grant money that they're going to be receiving to make improvements to our Main Street. In addition to that, HMRA on our own has come up with a signage and paint campaign. And so what that is, is we will help businesses replace their signage or do exterior paint to their building. And we'll pay 60% of that project for the signage up to $500 and for the paint up to $750. And I think we have, I'm going to say between seven to 10 applications on that. And our design committee meets and reviews those and then I will pass those off to the Historic Commission and then they'll sign off on if they approve of those and then that's just another way that we get some more improvement done to our Main Street. So we're excited about that. If you don't know, next Wednesday we're having our third annual music feast table and that's at the Main Street Commons. It's $5 admission, we have a beer playing from 7 until 10. We have some food vendors coming out and we'll also have a beverage garden with beer and wine for sale at that. This is the third year that we're doing it and we're really excited about that. So if you have any like family or friends coming in from out of town for Thanksgiving, send them down our way to the Main Street Commons because we'd like to have them. And then HMRA has been working in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce to come up with some events to have quarterly and I think the mayor's going to touch on that. However, we've had two movie nights already, one was in the summer and we just had one at Halloween at the Main Street Commons. And our next one is going to be on December the 1st following the city's parade. So the parade is at 4:30. Then we're hopefully going to have some food vendors set up so people could get some food to eat. And then at 6 o'clock, the movie will start at the Opera House upstairs. Some of the small things that we have going on, but I just wanted everyone to be aware that HMRA is here and we're working with our businesses and we're going to stuff those slowly but surely. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marilyn, I have a comment, this is the first time I've heard a spending report coming from HMRA. In the past, they've been receiving money, never giving back.
Well, we asked them to give it away.
I'm glad, I'm glad that we see that, they're making an attempt to help the city out. Really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And moving right along on our agenda is Mr. Alan, is any updates from you, sir?
Just a couple things. On the CTC project, I'm glad the report Marshall Street is complete and functioning well. We monitored it through this rain we've been having, it's complete and draining well. Unless we have a hurricane or something, normal rain and stuff, we shouldn't have any more issues in that area over there. On the project over Cherokee in the Harrow Park area, it's about 90% complete, all the pipes in, catch base in, still got to do some adjustments on the catch base and lids and just probably grass in the area and stuff, but it's about 90%. But it is functioning now. A couple of other things, just bring council update on, we met with the Green Lightbulb people, come a couple weeks ago, we met, they got everything they need now and as soon as they get proposing back to us, we'll get it to council, y'all review. But they come a couple weeks ago and pretty much stayed another day with us, but they said they got everything they need now. So as soon as I get that, I'll get that to you. Next thing is, it's time for the UNCF College Fund. We get four tickets with our sponsorship, so if we need more than four, they'll just need to let me know, I'll do the next week, 10 days, but we get four.
What's our sponsorship?
15, if we get a table and get recognized in the program and a banner and all, and get four tickets. But if we can get additional tickets, but we just need to know ahead of time. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alan. Mr. Frog, any updates from the legal department?
Not official city business, but I would just take this opportunity to kind of give y'all an update. My firm and myself along with Lucas Axon and Kent Williams tomorrow are giving turkeys to all the first responders in the county, from rain, centenary, Mullins, Marion, across the board. We'll be, we're stationed behind the county administration building and most people will come to pick them up at 11. We'll be, the Marion Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department and the city police after that. If y'all are out and about and have time, stop by and say hello and just shake a hand and say thank you to the first responders, I'd love to have y'all, but just a small way to give back and say thank you for what they do. So just want to give you all that update.
Thank you, Mr. Frog. Okay, moving right along with our updates, myself and council members, I want to say I had the privilege this weekend, I was invited to, and I went to Jackson McGill 90th Anniversary and Community Appreciation Day. And it was Saturday at their facility down there and I know y'all noticed that they required a lot beside them over the last year and they cleaned that property up the side up. They had a fantastic turnout. That whole property was covered with children running around playing, old IG parking lots packed. They had inflatable games for the children, they had food, they had horse rides in the back for the small kids, so they had a great thing. But they also recognized all the first responders for the City of Marion, so they recognized the City of Marion Police Department for all that they do for our community and assisting them with when they have funerals, getting them through town and all that. So they recognized Tony and the Fire Police Department and so we got a little plaque from them, appreciate that. They also recognized the Fire Department as well for everything that the Fire Department does. So Ms. McGill, Employee at McGill, they did a fantastic job and they had a tremendous event. And the same thing with Jackson McGill, they are celebrating their 90th anniversary. So I'd like a motion to present them and talk to them a proclamation for being a 90 business for 90 years and we can get them here at next month's council meeting, present with that proclamation for being a viable business in the City of Marion for 90 plus years, which is a test.
Mayor, I so move, we move forward with that proclamation honoring Jackson McGill's 90th Anniversary Business in City of Marion.
Thank you, sir. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Also, on that same day with Veterans Day, I had the pleasure of being in the Veterans Day Parade, involved with a lot of y'all and I appreciate everybody being there. We were celebrating our heroes and putting their life on the line. I know a lot of our members up here, they've served in the military and I appreciate what y'all have done to protect our freedom, go in harm's way and so we can sit here tonight and have these council meetings and all our veterans before us that have come and gone. So that was a good day, then I went to the high school for a program, Miss Taxi was there and I appreciate being there, we got some good picks together.
We did.
Carl had a good program, he was a native of Mullins. Actually, as we were talking, we went to Francis Marion together at the same time, we were at Francis Marion College at the same time, so he was a super nice guy and we had a good program. So the Veterans Day Program and the City of Marion was great. And then on last Friday, we had the City of Marion's Veterans Day Program down at the Triangle here on South Main Street. And that's where we had an opportunity for our veterans to come. We had former Mayor Rodney Berry came, gave a very inspirational talk recognizing the veterans. So I think we did a really good job as far as recognizing the veterans. Next year, I think what I would like to try and do is on that program that the city does, is maybe we do a little bit of a chicken bar, barbecue or something, have them come out and have a little meal for them as well. We'll figure out something on that, but I think I'd like to try and do that next year in addition to what we're doing for our veterans. So everything was good on that. Continuing with some updates, of course, you know, everybody sees what's happening next month's Christmas, so our city crews, Public Works is diligently putting up lights. We'll be here before we know it, so they're putting up the lights. While we're talking about Christmas, if you all mark your calendars, December the 1st, you should have a flyer in your packet. December 1st is our Christmas Parade at 4:30 and as HMRA is having a prelude to Christmas from 9 to 1. The Christmas Parade is sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Then on Sunday, December 2nd, is our much anticipated Christmas Tree Lighting Program. 6 o'clock, maybe Santa Claus will come riding in on the fire truck for the children. We'll have a short 30-minute program and then after that, at 7 o'clock, we'll have our fireworks show that always everybody looks forward to each year. Then on the 8th, we've got a busy December, guys and ladies. December the 8th, the Pilot Club is having the Fazare at 10 o'clock and then a museum is having a luncheon from 12 to 2. Then there's the historic tour Marion sponsored by HMRA, excuse me, Chamber and Pilot Club Tour Marion Tour of Homes from 2 to 6, from Saturday to 8. And then on Thursday, December the 13th, the downtown merchants have evening shopping hours from 6 to 8 p.m. I know they encourage y'all to come out and visit them, spend locally, keep our businesses thriving on Main Street, that would be much appreciated and I know it's sometimes easier to click online or order something, but before you do that, at least try your merchants here in town and see if there is availability for those items that you need for all expenses. FEMA, we had a meeting last week with the FEMA directors and for reimbursement for all the money we outlay with Hurricane Florence, they're going to be in town again tomorrow and maybe to do some more than they were. They'll go out and do inspections on some of our sites and stuff like that. Ms. Patricia and Elizabeth are excellent now unfortunately at doing all the paperwork that they want us to fill out, even though they got a little bit of a different formula this year, it's more all online kind of deal, so we're working on that and as soon as we get closer to know where, but y'all, y'all look all right, it takes a time to get this money reimbursed and then, you know, we're working on it, doing all we can do on that. So good news is last, was last week was the election and on the election ballot was the capital sales tax initiative that we had planned and it was approved. So the City of Marion got approved for two projects. One is the Green Street Sports Complex expansion, which is going to include softball, I mean another baseball field, soccer field, football field, maybe climb up the property there so we'll have places to expand and have all their activities for sports at the Green Street Complex. And then also the renovations, the much needed renovations here at City Hall to bring some of the safety issues up, the ADA compliance and some issues. So we've got some work coming on that. From my understanding, that won't come online, we won't be able to start seeing things probably late until late spring, there's a couple other projects, only old capital sales tax that has to be completed first before we can move forward with the first. And the city has one more project.
Playground for Watson.
Yeah, we, on the initial first capital sales tax deal, they listed like 10 projects and they had like three alternate projects. If there was enough funding at the end of the deal, these alternate projects got funded and there is. So we're going to get new playground equipment for Watson. And it's specific because the way it was on the ballot referendum, that equipment would have to go to Watson and we'll be working on getting ideas together for that, for that playground equipment at Watson and all that. So that's all I got, unless anybody's got any questions, I'll go Mr. Baker.
I just have one. Alan, how long did it take when Harry King, Matthew came through for FEMA to reimburse? About two years?
Yeah, it'd be at least, we just got a check, about a month to go from the ice phone with Paul Matthew.
Whoa.
That we had in fourteen.
Just so everybody will know, it's not going to be, because I thought it was about two years or better. Okay, that's all I have.
Councilman Fraser? Councilman Macklin?
I don't have anything other than, I had a house there on Oliver Street that had grown up pretty bad and they got it took care of.
Okay, good. Councilman Macklin?
The only thing, Mr. Will Banks is here with the Rec Department tonight and again, part of this deal that was just passed, Green Street Improvements, I've had real good reports, Cliff, about what you're doing with the Rec Department, I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you for the hard work you're doing. Sounds like with all this, with this capital sales tax, you'll have your hands full moving forward also.
Yes, thank you, Cliff. Councilman Taffet?
Yes, on this Saturday at 12 o'clock at the Shannon Wickerson Gym, we're going to have our Rise Above It All Program. And rise above it all, the theme means that, with God you can rise above anything. So we're going to give away coats to children that were affected by the hurricane and some of the children are just need based, okay? So we're going to do that at 12 o'clock. For those of you that can, please come out. Also, the Shrine of Spring is at 11, so we're going to do it immediately after that parade. Also, the Box 84 Initiative for Boys donated coats to me on Saturday, last Saturday, prior to their Washington DC trip. So I'm grateful, that was their way of getting me out of bed at 6 o'clock. So I met them at Johnicken Middle School and got some very, very nice coats, so I'm very appreciative to the Box 84 Initiative. They took the kids on a three-day trip to Washington DC where they were able to tour Howard University and they looked like distinguished gentlemen, the younger version. They were dressed nice and my understanding is that they had a very successful trip. So we thank them for coming to Marion and showing our kids that they can be law-abiding and productive citizens and that you can come from Marion and do great things. You could actually graduate from here, leave, go do good and come back and get back to this community. And that's what we're hoping that some of these kids do, don't ever forget where you come from. Also, I had the pleasure and privilege of speaking at East Dillon Primary School and that was very interesting because I thought I was going to be at Johnicken Middle, so I had to actually change my vocabulary while I was doing the presentation. And that was very interesting. I thought I was going to have 35 kids, I think I had like 130, so, and they're very intelligent. So when you say MOS and that kind of thing, they want to know what you're talking about. So that was good, I ended up staying there for about an hour, so yeah, that was good. They taught me a lot too. Let me see, what else? The other thing is, what? I think that's it for me, yeah. So I would just like to thank all of my comrades, we have a new VFW post, it's the old JPK Building and we're going to have our grand opening very soon. So again, thank all of my comrades for protecting and serving this great country. And as the mayor said, we had a great luncheon on Saturday and he did a good job with the welcome and he actually served, he and his wife both. After the welcome, he got up and served, so thank you for that.
My pleasure. Councilman Hurd?
I'd just like to thank everybody again for outpouring support that we have for our Judge Beth and her family, giving condolences to her family. We all attended the service, I think everyone that could attend it, attended today. And she was really a top-notch person and a great human being and I was honored to see her on a maybe weekly sometime, mostly daily basis. And just, she'd be greatly missed if she was a great asset to our community, I just want to say, so that's all I want to say about her, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We meant the agenda inhabitants, Woodbury presented her presentation before we go into executive session, I have a motion that we do that.
Move it all up?
Yeah, move it all up to come before, before the council now.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Ms. Marilyn Woodbury?
Good evening. My purpose this evening is not to rehash the controversy, even to focus on the interaction between the mayor and I, rather it's to point out a compelling and important alternative to the two most common reactions when someone makes a mistake or offers offense to another person. The easiest path to take after speaking with the mayor on September 20th would have simply been to slander his name and demand an apology. But you know, after much thought and prayer, I have decided we need to get away from where we demand apologies every time someone misspeaks. Conversely, I could have simply ignored the matter in hopes that it would eventually fade from my collective consciousness. Instead, I choose to take a third route, one that offers us a powerful lesson for dealing with this issue today. By coming to confront the mayor this evening, not only will the initial wrong be publicly addressed and forgiven, and forgiveness given, but it will also give the City of Marion a chance to witness the fact that little is accomplished when we define people by their mistakes. Jesus's golden rule, doing to others as you would have them doing to you, remain etched in my collective conscience as a reverent idea even as society moves steadily away from biblical morality. While most of us would likely agree that's not how it usually plays out, the basic impulse is good. Yet, there's another aspect of the golden rule that often goes overlooked by Christians and non-Christians alike. When Jesus first gave those words in Luke's Gospel, he does so in the context of teaching his disciples to love their enemies. He assumed that such treatment will not be returned, meaning that the only reason a person could have for acting in that way is that Jesus said it was the correct thing to do. That becomes especially important in how we react when others wrong us. When you and I say or do something we come to regret, we tend to approach rectifying the situation with the understanding that it was just one mistake. And even if that laps in judgment falls among a series of missteps, that could indicate a genuine flaw in our character. It rarely changes the way we see ourselves on a fundamental level. In short, we give ourselves the benefit of the doubt and don't define ourselves by our worst moments. We assume the worst in others but the best in ourselves. And Jesus was very clear that we are called to be more than that. Christ's command to treat others as we want to be treated means having as much mercy for them as we have for ourselves. What would our culture look like if Christians became known for taking position when we ammark our ridicule? Mord breaking is not gospel work? Witch hunting is not gospel work? Shaming the outcasts is not gospel work? Forgiving sin is gospel work? Our culture needs to see us respond to negativity with gospel work rather than outrage and pity. They need to see us forgive them just as we would forgive ourselves. So to you, Mayor Brandy, I forgive you for the tone used in responding to my concerns after Hurricane Florence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments and coming to that.
Sir?
Thank you for coming and your comments, yes, ma'am. Motion to go to adjourn and go into the executive session?
I make the motion to go into executive session to talk about.